We are doing a informational session.
Yeah, wait till Paul gives you the.
Yeah, he said give him fifteen seconds.
Oh, okay. Rock and roll, Skip.
Hey there. Hey there, everybody. We do not have a quorum yet, but we do have a informational segment, yeah, session here for a dog, canine dog unit. They should be entering the, entering soon. So just everybody be patient, if you would, please.
Ten.
What?
It's ten, ten minutes. Um, for three years and then six years retired. Skip, but you want to do just for their information that Chief Monaco will be doing demonstration on canine grant program as the agenda states?
Sure, you go right ahead, Mike. You got it right there.
All right.
Yeah, they come right now.
Folks, for those that are watching, we have Chief Monaco coming in to do a demonstration for a canine unit grant acceptance of donation. Chief, leave it up to you.
Anything? Anything? Thank you. So, members of the board, I just want to let you know I'm looking to apply for a grant from the Stanton Foundation.
This is just informational, so don't address everything to us up here. It's for the public that are watching.
It's for the public, yeah.
Public information.
Sure. Town of Rutland, I'm looking to apply for a grant from the Stanton Foundation. It's a nonprofit, and one of the things they do is they help start up canine programs for town police departments. And tonight I have Officer Jim Wernan from Winchandon Police Department.
Welcome.
And Winchandon has received the Stanton Foundation grant, and Jim runs a canine program there. And I chose Winchandon because they're similar in size to Rutland, similar population, similar sized police department. And Jim's going to give you a little rundown about his canine program. And then, if okay, maybe bring the dog in for a little demonstration.
Great.
All right. Go ahead, Jim.
As Chief said, Officer Jim Wernan with the Winchandon Police Department. I got my partner Clyde through the Stanton Foundation. The grant is a great tool for any local department that get a police dog. They provide funding for the dog. I believe it's $25,000 they'll give you, which covers the purchase of the dog, the kennel for the cruiser, a kennel for home, food for three years, vet bills for three years, pretty much any expense that you can think of to get the dog up and running. It'll cover any training aids that you need, like bite suits, stuff like that. So anything that the police department needs for the canine, they provide for the first three years. They also, they'll pay for coverage for the officer while they're in the academy. It's a reimbursement. So once the, the department will have to eat the cost while the, the dog's in training, but they'll reimburse all the payments for, I think it's up to $1,000, well, each week while the dog is in training. So that helps out small departments like us. It's great. There's no real difficulty getting the payments from the grant. Once you get the letter of intent from your town, your Board of Selectmen and your, your town administrator, they, they cut you a check, I think it was a week later. We had the check to go purchase the dog and purchase the equipment. All they require from the department is record keeping of all the financials, what you're spending the money on. I do that myself. It's really easy. They give you a spreadsheet, you just go through it, just keep track of all your receipts and everything, submit it to the grant every quarter for the first year. After that, it's yearly. It's real simple to do, real, real easy grant to work with. The foundation, they'll come out, they'll meet with your department, they'll meet with your chief, they'll meet with your handler to make sure everything's in line. And again, I really can't say that there was anything difficult about it.
Can you say a little more about the Stanton Foundation? What is it? Where is it located?
It's a, I believe it's a Mass grant, they, but they'll provide findings for, I think it's Mass in New Hampshire right now, and I think Maine. I'm not positive. The, the grant, it's, it's a private grant. It's not, it's not publicly funded or anything like that. It's just, I can't really remember who, who started it. I apologize for that. I should have had that ready for you. But again, they come right to you, they'll come to your department, they'll talk to your chief, they'll talk, talk to the handler. And they're really accommodating. They'll even assist you with doing fundraises later on. They have people and companies that can assist you with fundraises. So once the grant runs out, you're still able to raise some money.
That's nice.
So did they help you find the place to purchase the dog? Or you?
Actually, they hook you up, they hook you up with either the state police or the Boston Police Canine Unit, depending on what works best for your department. There's also a department out west that will assist them with purchasing, will assist you with purchasing the dog, training the dog, and yearly certifications. Myself, I went with the state police just because it's, it was a little bit easier traveling with the state police and training with them because they're right in the area. They're very accommodating. They, this Mass State Police actually does not charge you to train your dog, whereas Boston Police Department does. So that was a savings for our department as well, because the grant will pay for your yearly certifications. I believe they allocate like $500 a year for training. I was able to save that money and allocate it somewhere else towards dog food or vet bills. So basically, the grant will give you this breakdown as to what they want you to spend the money on. It's just a rough outline. If you have to spend a little bit more money on your dog to get a good dog, you can flex some money from here if you save it somewhere else. I built my own kennel and doghouse. I saved, I think it was like $2,000. I use it for vet bills. I also got insurance for the dog, so the grant pays for my insurance for the dog. So if he gets sick or injured or anything like that, I have insurance that reimburses me 90% of all vet bills, so.
That's great.
The training for, it depends on what the town wants. Most departments in the area go with a dual-purpose dog. So Clyde is patrol certified, which he'll do tracking, criminal apprehension, he'll do evidence recovery, which is article searches. So if there's, somebody tosses a gun or a knife or something like that, or even if somebody's house gets broken into and they're just tossing things in, in the yards as they're walking down the street, Clyde can find that stuff. He also is trained in narcotics, so he can find cocaine, heroin, and meth. So those are some of the things that he can do. They don't train dogs in marijuana anymore, just because of the change in the law, so they want to keep all the dogs being able to be used and so you can testify in the court that your dog will not alert on marijuana, so.
So he, he's already trained for finding individuals that are lost?
Yep. Yes. Clyde has actually had several good finds already, and I can't stress how important it is to have a dog. We wouldn't have found these people without Clyde in Winchandon. We had one elderly gentleman that had Alzheimer's. The police department, fire department, had been looking for him for, I think it was like an hour and a half, two hours before I got the call. I was on my way home from training. I responded and found him in 10 minutes. So he was probably 30 feet in the woods, but probably 200, 300 yards away from his house. Tracked right to him, found him. He was unable to respond to anybody. He was injured. So we located him, transported him to the hospital. He also found a male individual that was suffering from depression, was wanted to harm himself. We found him before he was able to do that, got him help. There's also another individual that got lost in the woods, ended up passing out in the woods, and it was, I think it was 20-degree temperature. Found him. He was, started to show signs of early hypothermia, and we found him, got him transported. So these are three people that wouldn't, wouldn't have been found if it wasn't for Clyde.
So, so in your eyes, it's a?
He's earned every penny that we spent on him.
Right. And it's actually saving money for the town?
Yes, because our chief calls him a force multiplier. We can do things with Clyde that we would have to call in multiple people and other agencies and stuff like that for. So we're able to save time and money with Clyde responding to calls.
Yeah, you just mentioned that, you just mentioned that police and fire had been searching for that individual for an hour and a half. They called you, and you found him in 10 minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's worth it. The family, I mean, that family was a huge supporter after that. They, you know, they, they put a thing on our Facebook page, "Thank you so much." Our family appreciates it, all that. And the dog, I mean, he, he's, he's great PR tool for the police department, too. He works great with kids. He's great with talking to elderly communities. We go up to our assisted living home with him. We go up there a couple times a year. He gets to meet the, the residents there. It's a great PR tool, too. So not only is he a lifesaver, he's good creating a conversation between the police department and the, the public.
So he's good with community policing?
Yep. Great with it.
What was the department doing prior to you and Clyde?
We were calling the state police or the Department of Corrections before that, and the state police and the Department of Corrections are always there to help out, but their response time sometimes is a little bit longer because they might be coming, the state police cover for anywhere from 495 to the New York line. So that's our troop right there. That's what the Canine West covers. So they could be coming out from Lee or wherever, and it could take them an hour, hour and a half to respond. My typical response time is 15 to 20 minutes, depending. If I'm working, it's obviously right away. But when they call me in, it's usually about 15 to 20 minutes. It doesn't take long. They get ready.
Here in central Worcester County, besides yourself, what other departments in the area have canines that you're familiar with?
I'm not too familiar with this direct area, but in my area, we have Westminster, myself, and there's Lunenburg, and Athol just got a dog through the grant as well.
So four departments in North County?
Four departments, yep. And we actually, I assist the North Worcester County Drug Task Force as well. So we, we assist other towns with search warrants, and they also come to Winchandon and then help us with search warrants as well. So he's useful for that as well. The narcotics, again, it's always good to find, you know, some heroin or some cocaine right now. It's, I mean, it's a great win feeling, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions? Any other questions?
I have to say.
Would you, would you give him your name?
I'm Bob Anderson.
All right.
Chief of Rutland. I have to give the chief a lot of credit for coming forward with this. In fact, I believe it was 1984, we had a canine, unvaluable. I mean, so valuable dog, saves you so much time and work, and this is a multi-dog, which is even better. I'll tell you, it's good that I give you a lot of credit for making it forward, chief. It really is a big step up for the town.
I would highly, I mean, not just being a canine handler myself, I would highly recommend it. I mean, just the stuff that I've seen them do. I'm always amazed at what these dogs can do. We've done tracks where there's been multiple people, and we can narrow it down to one person. So if there's like three people that split off and we're looking for that one person, if we have a sent article, we can narrow it down to him. They're always training and coming up with new things that they can be used for, different ways to utilize them. Like my chief said, it's a, he says it's a force multiplier, and I completely agree with everything he's always said about it. He keeps us safe as well. The dog keeps us safe. We've had unruly subjects in town that the moment they hear the dog bark, they come completely compliant. We don't even have to go hands-on with them. They just completely comply with us. We've also found kids lost in the woods. So the dog is also, again, like I said, he's a community relations tool. He, he's great with kids. So when we find people in the woods, he's not looking to bite them or anything like that. It's amazing, these dogs can tell what you're looking to do. So, and there's also indicators with the training. So when we go tracking a person, he knows he's going to track somebody. He knows where, he's going to be clearing a building, he knows he might have to bite somebody inside. So it's, the training that the state police provide us is an invaluable tool. And again, I've, I've utilized them for the last two and a half years, so.
I have a question. So your, your training is ongoing, obviously. You're always working with the dog. But how long was the initial training to get the dog trained in those, in those areas?
So the tracking and the apprehension and evidence recovery, that type of stuff, that was 14 weeks is the minimum. My group took a little bit longer just because of holidays and all this other stuff. It, I mean, it got extended out a little bit, but it ended up being 14 weeks is the minimum to be certified. So at the end of that 14 weeks, the Stanton Grant, once you provide them with your certification, they reimburse you. They'll send you the check for the $14,000, so. And then after that, you have an eight-week narcotics class. That's what we did. They also have cadaver and firearms. So if you're looking to do a firearms dog or a cadaver dog, which isn't usually useful for most small towns, you could do that as well. But the narcotics training was eight weeks. The eight weeks, I don't believe they do a full reimbursement. It's something new that they're doing, so they're doing, I think it's $4,000 at the end of that, which is still great. I mean, it's a huge cost savings when they reimburse that, so. But yeah, the grant, again, it covers everything that you need for the dog. You can't use it to, to do other things with it. It has to be strictly for the dog. It has to be in its own account. And that, that works well because it's never getting touched by anybody else in the town.
That's great.
Is there any other added liability to the department for having a canine? You know, a fellow officer is not likely to bite somebody accidentally, but yet the dog could.
No more. Yeah, it's no more so than carrying tasers or a baton or pepper spray. It's a tool. It's, the town should look into their insurance. I don't know, it depends on how your, your town's insured, but ours didn't look at it, our insurance, the town's insurance didn't look at anything different other than a, like a taser or a baton or any other, any other tool that we have on our belt. So they didn't, they didn't see an added risk by having a dog. The handlers at home are covered by their own house insurance. They have to make sure that their insurance is covered. So when the dog's at their house, because it stays with them, it lives with them, their insurance covers it there.
Okay.
So it's not.
Is there any added cost for you for that?
Nope. My insurance company gave me a waiver. All I had to do was provide him a picture of my kennel and a certification saying that he was a certified police dog. And they didn't increase my, my bill or anything like that. They didn't threaten to end my insurance. They just, they gave me a waiver. So it's like he's not even there.
If your dog is sick or injured and he's at home, it's your insurance that covers that, or?
Nope. It's still the, it's still the town's, it's still through the grant or the, the insurance. It's only my house insurance if, like, if, so say somebody stuck their finger in the kennel and they vet him. It wouldn't happen. My dog doesn't do that. Most dogs don't do that. It depends on the demeanor of the dog. But if something, some freak accident were to happen like that, where, you know, somebody got injured at the house, your home insurance would cover it, so. But again, it all depends on the dogs that you select. I told the state that I wanted a dog that I'd be able to do demonstrations with and be community relations. They found a perfect dog. I can bring Clyde in here. You guys can see him. He's kind of a nut.
Really appreciate that.
Yeah. Another question.
Yeah. There'll be no bites.
There's another question.
Is a dog with you 40 hours a week on your normal shift?
He lives with me, and he works with me, yeah.
So when you go to work, he goes to work?
Yep.
When you're on vacation, another officer can't take him?
Nope.
Easily because he's?
No, he's, he's bonded with me, so I either take him or there's, there's kennels in the area that do handle police dogs. And again, that can be through, you can pay for that through fundraising. A lot of vets will volunteer their services to, you know, to either kennel them or pay for their, you know, treatments and stuff like that. All depends on how much work that you want to put into finding fundraises and stuff like that. So my vet does all his basic care for, for free, and then anything that, you know, that is above and beyond, like the regular vaccinations, the regular treatments, yearly exams and stuff like that, they give us 20% off, and then the, the insurance covers the rest, so.
Great.
So it all depends on how much legwork the department wants to do.
I promise this will be the last one.
That's, no, I have no issues answering them.
One question I'm surprised the gentlemen up front haven't asked is how much added overtime did you get once you received the dog in town? Meaning, we got a problem at night, you're not working, you're working during the day, you have to go in.
To be honest with you, myself as an officer, I've lost overtime being a canine officer. All right? Because they flex, the canine shift that I work is more flexible, so I've actually lost money doing this. So they flex my hours. If I'm able to come in early to cover like a search warrant, something like that, I'll come in early, I'll work the search warrant, and then I'll leave after eight hours. So it depends on your department and what you're working out. But by federal law, there is mandatory time that you have to compensate the officer to, to care for the dog. You can either give him time off, or you can pay him overtime. So it depends, again, on the, what the town's willing to do, and also what the canine unit is willing to do. So it's, you know, you've got to work together. But other than that, overtime, I haven't really accrued much overtime because I usually either take time off or, or they flex my shift.
If you respond to another town, would that town actually pay your overtime costs if you were called outside? No?
No. So if you're called to an outside town, at least the way it works with our department is?
Mutual aid?
It's, it's under a mutual aid agreement.
Yeah.
We have, like Templeton and Ashburnham, they back us up all the time, and we don't send them a bill. I mean, they don't, they don't send us a bill. We back them up. It's a mutual aid thing. It's just like a fire. If there's a fire, I'm sure Rutland sends every apparatus they have to the neighboring town to help fight a fire. It's the same thing. You know, we use our tools to help out our neighbors, so.
Let's meet Clyde.
Let's meet him.
Are we ready to meet Clyde?
I'll go. I'll go.
Do you want to call to order?
To expand on what Tim said about the insurance company, I already contacted the town's insurance. Dog would be covered under our existing policy.
Do you want to call to order?
Yeah.
And say the pledge of allegiance?
At this moment in time, I'd like to call the selectmen's meeting to order for February 26, 2018. At 6:25, please stand and say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize to the board. That was unexpected. Not a word.
No problem, Sheila.
They were able to do their presentation.
Sorry you missed part of that.
I didn't miss the dog.
No, you didn't miss that. That's it.
He actually wanted to scope out the room before he brought the dog in. That's why he came in without the dog.
Oh, yeah. No, that's a good move. Could have motion to sign treasury warrant. 18 and payroll.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
About some selectman minutes. Oh, I guess we'll, we'll wait on the minutes.
Yes, you will.
Oh, boy.
Ah, Shepherd.
Oh, it's Clyde.
This is Clyde. He's, he's going to be four years old in, ah, Lenny, zoomed down, in about a month and a half. So we got him from Connecticut Canine. Came from Slovakia. And yeah, like I said, he's dual-purpose and patrol and narcotics. He knows it. His toy's in my pocket. You can smell it, obviously. But yeah, so he's, he's going to be four years old. We got him at 15 months. He was $7,500, but that's what they, ah, Lenny.
Oh, jeez.
So he's pretty. Yes, good boy. Well, everything he does, he does for the toy. So when he finds somebody, he's not looking to bite somebody. He's a bad guy. He's looking to get his toy.
Yeah, but his toy.
Yeah. So when he finds narcotics, he gets his toy. So if he doesn't find something, or if he doesn't do something that I want him to do, he doesn't get his toy.
So you said he came from Czechoslovakia. Is he full German, or is he Malinois?
No, he's a full German Shepherd.
Full German.
Yep, pure German Shepherd.
Clearly very high drive.
Yep, they all are. It makes them work well. But yeah, he's, he's also very friendly, so when I bring him to schools and stuff like that, as long as the, the class is, you know, somewhat under control, they can meet him and stuff like that.
I want to go over here.
Hi, Clyde.
Hi, Clyde. You're a good boy.
But yeah, any other questions?
How much does he eat?
How much does he weigh?
As much as he wants. As much as he wants, my buck.
He'll throw like one of the big bags of dog food, like a bag and a half.
He's a happy dog.
Oh, yeah. It's a baseball bat, sorry. Yeah. Well, he's always swinging it. He's always happy.
Beautiful dog.
Thank you. So yeah, he's always swinging it. Everything he does, he does because he enjoys doing it. It's all a big game for him. It's not like he's a vicious man-eater or anything like that. As you can tell, he's not freaking out at everybody in here. He just wants to beat up against me. And yeah, he keeps our department safe. There's been several incidents where I've used him. I haven't even taken him out of the cruiser. I just told him, you know, somebody, you know, if you don't listen, you know, if you don't show me hands, the dogs will come out. They show me the hands, they stop doing what they're doing right away. And he doesn't even have to get deployed, but he's, he's helping, you know, he's protecting. Just because people know that he's around, he's keeping us safe, so.
Can I ask you about the food? What, what is he eating?
So he only eats high-quality dog food. He eats, actually, it's called Earthborn. There's several different dog foods that you can do, but you want to make sure that it's a real high-quality stuff. You don't want to be giving him like an Alpo or anything like that, because it's kind of like fast food for dogs.
Was that a requirement that came from the training facility? Did he come with a?
No, exactly. Nope. He came, actually, to be honest with you, I don't even know what he was eating when we got him.
Okay.
The state police, they're really knowledgeable with everything. The trainer that I have, the trainers that I've had, have been doing it for years. They, one of them was a vet tech, very knowledgeable about the animals. So he recommended a dog food. I went out and got it. The dog loved it, and he's been eating it since. He doesn't get table scraps. He doesn't get burgers or anything like that. Everywhere we go, they offer to give him a cookie at a drive-through or something like that. He can't eat that stuff because it'll just get him fat.
Does Winchandon maintain a gift account for him?
Yes, actually, I started doing a couple different fundraises. We did a mailer to the town. I sell T-shirts every year. We've had somebody donate paintings to him, and they sold the paintings. They, town supports him tremendously. We've gotten, trying to think, oh, there's a children's book that's coming out soon and a coloring book. So somebody donated that. We're going to be able to sell those on Amazon, actually.
Nice.
So people are going to be able to buy that. So, um, people are gonna be able to buy that, we'll get portions of that money. It'll go, all goes into a gift account for Clyde, it's only touched for his, uh, training, his food, anything like that, so really, it hasn't even been touched yet. Uh, we've, in three years, we've raised over twenty-five thousand, I think, for him. So, that'll keep him, uh, healthy for a while, but we're trying, we're constantly trying to, to fundraise past the original, uh, you know, past Clyde. So, basically, I'm looking, uh, to maintain Clyde right now, but I'm also looking to purchase the next of it. You know, so when Clyde gets to retire and sit on my couch all night, um, I wanna be getting, uh, the department ready to get another dog.
And they typically retire after how many years?
Uh, depends, I've seen, the state police, I've seen one dog that's working, he's fourteen years old, he only does narcotics stuff. Uh, he's not a patrol dog anymore, but that's, uh, very rare, usually, I would say, like, eight to ten, is what I've seen. Um, but, again, there's some dogs that are older, there's some dogs that are younger. It all depends on how healthy you keep him. Uh, the leaner you keep him, the healthier they're gonna be, they're not gonna have as many hip issues, stuff like that. Uh, when you purchase a dog also, they, um, they, you know, they'll give you x-rays, they'll give you all this other stuff, you wanna bring him to the vet to get him, uh, get him checked out before, and that's all stuff that I'm willing to help, uh, the chief with, to talk him through that stuff, so.
And I heard you talk about how you have veterinary care that's been donated locally, which is amazing.
Yep.
Did they tell you anything in terms of advanced veterinary care, if an animal needed it, um, are any of the departments getting pet insurance?
I have pet insurance, yep.
You have it?
Yeah, so I got, um, well, through the town, but I, I went out and got, um, there's several out there, I have a true payantian. So, what it does is, um, any emergency, it'll cover up to ninety percent, you pay it out, and then they'll reimburse you up to ninety percent. Uh, I wanna say his is eighty dollars a month, but it started out lower, because when they're younger, obviously, it started out, I think it was fifty-five dollars a month. And it depends on how much you wanna pay for the, uh, deductible, so it's just like current terms, if you wanna pay, um, if you wanna have a higher deductible, you're gonna be paying a lower monthly fee, obviously. Um, but I'll, I'll tell you, uh, when Clyde was in training, he went through a couple injuries, and it was worth every penny. Um, he, uh, he broke a tooth, and he had an eye injury, and he had a growth removed off his back, that was twenty-five hundred dollars. They reimbursed ninety percent of it. So, it was, uh, I was very glad that we had that. Um, so he smiles with one less tooth. You can't even tell he had anything removed off his back, and his eye is fine, he had a stick up in the eye, so. But, it never slowed him down, I wouldn't even know, I didn't even know until after, when you, you checked him out, that there was something wrong with it, so.
So is it okay to interact with him?
Sure, um, right now, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, usually I don't.
Got his toy.
Usually I don't, but yeah.
Usually, well, I mean, I don't wanna...
No, no, that's fine, 'cause as long as I let him know that he's, you know. Yeah, he's very...
Of course he is. Good job Clyde, good job Clyde.
You like your toy?
Just watch your fingers, though, 'cause he does re-grip, there you go, stay on the handle.
You like how it works, oh my goodness. Oh, you're fun.
So yeah, I'm, I'm very lucky to have this dog, because there are some that are a little bit more high-strung, and it all depends on how you pick them and, uh...
Play drive, but I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're a little more high-strung, like, they, they, they wanna, you know, they bark, and they wanna, they're a little more, uh, I can't really say out of control, but yeah, it's, it's...
Ambitious.
Yeah.
And you said he's narcotics and...
And patrol, so that's, uh, evidence of tracking.
Tracking, okay.
Yeah, and it does, uh, criminal apprehension as well. Sorry, I don't want to bruise your knee with this tail.
That's okay, that's it, I'm numb by now.
But yeah, he's, uh, again, he's great for the town, um, our town manager loves him, our chief loves him, um, he's actually one of, me and him are the only picture, I think, hanging in our police department, so. I get a lot of grief about that.
Oh, thank you so much for making it.
No problem, any other questions, Bob?
Thank you for going over everything, that was great.
Not a problem. Um, and if, again, I went through the whole grant process, so if the chief has any questions, I can help him with that, too. And it's, there, to be honest with you, this grant is, uh, so easy to go through, uh, to apply for, and to, you know, they'll, they'll assist you with any wa, any way they can. They're, uh, very friendly people. Yeah, this tail is unbelievable, this is what it's like all day. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Like, like Jim said, it's very easy to apply for the grant, and it's actually a non-competitive grant, so as long as we are qualified, which we are, we're gonna get it. So I hope you enjoyed the presentation, and I'm, I'm behind this one hundred percent, and I think it'd be a great asset for the town, uh, for the community, just for public safety. Um, and so I'd ask the board respectfully that you authorize, uh, the town administrator to let, write a letter of support, so I could apply for the grant. I'm not, uh, not gonna rush into it, obviously, I can do a lot more research, um, get all the policies in place beforehand, but I would like permission to apply if possible.
So, could I have a motion to...
I've got a, just a suggestion, recommendation, um, that we incorporate FinCom in this, since there is gonna be financial impact for the town. I think it would only be fair, uh, if Nick could meet with FinCom prior to the submission, and give them a heads up, and let, give them an overview of what, uh, this grant, and how it's gonna impact, and I'm sure you, uh, would wanna participate in that as well. So, you have a better picture of the whole budget, uh, for the department, as sure as FinCom does, but it sounds like a great program, uh, with minimum exposure to the, uh, as far as financial exposure to the town.
Right.
So Michael, could I get you to make a motion with the approval of FinCom?
Uh, yes, I'll make that motion, uh, that, uh, we, uh, support the chief's, uh, request for the K-9 grant, and also, uh, that, uh, FinCom be included in the, uh, approval process.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, I mean, you know, I've wanted this for a long time, the community, we have, um, the amount of runaways that you deal with up at Deveraux, and just interaction with our community is just gonna be a huge asset to your department.
So do you think Deveraux would, uh, be able to, uh, supplement some of those costs?
I think we can talk to them in future years.
Well, the, um, the grant, it pays for the program in full, for at least the first three years. And like, like Jim was saying, he was able to offset a lot of the costs, he, he built the kennel himself, he, uh, he got free veterinary care, so a lot of that money that was allocated from the grant, he's been able to push forward to pay for other things. So I, I really don't foresee the town paying for anything for a while.
We may be able to help, um, we may be able to ask Deveraux to help with fundraisers.
Yeah.
And you may be able to partner with us for that.
Partner with us for that.
Good partnership, sure.
And I, I have spoken to Carrie Anne, and she's behind it one hundred percent, too.
He's, he seems to have been also very proactive, he almost has an endowment situation.
Right, right.
With the amount of money he has, he's, you know, putting...
From the research I've done, a lot of K-9 programs around do have, they get a lot of fundraising, a lot of donations.
Yeah.
Um, they, they pay for a lot of stuff through that.
Great.
So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you.
Before the chief leaves, I just have a quick question, if I have for Nick.
Yes.
Um, it's my understanding that, uh, one of our newest cruisers was involved in a vehicle accident?
Yes, it was.
And there was significant damage to it?
It was.
Do we know what the final number is on the damage?
Um, estimate, oh, it's not an estimate anymore, I guess it was about six thousand.
Six thousand.
So with a one thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
We should have it back end of this week, or...
Okay. Um, how quickly were you notified after the incident occurred?
I think within minutes.
Okay, from dispatch?
No, from the officer that was involved.
Okay, so it wasn't through dispatch?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just a direct call from the officer.
Okay, thank you kindly.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Anita Carlson and, uh, what?
I'm just asking Peter to set up his...
Oh, Anita Carlson and...
I don't know how wise it is to follow a doggy, and I know there's, uh, there's other boards...
It's a hard act, uh, hard act to follow, huh?
Do you wanna, do you wanna, um, there's some people waiting for appointments, do you wanna take out of order, or we're ready to go, too, if you want, up to you.
Well, let us do the appointments first, Peter, that way, some of the people...
Absolutely.
We have several appointments, actually, uh, appointments for the Fourth of July committee, Frank, uh, Ben Cor.
He's not here, but...
He's not here?
No, he's not, I'm missing fully, I forgot.
So, do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agriculture Commission, appointment of Pian... Pian Naisen, Naisel.
Nielson.
And Deborah Carlson.
Right back here.
Abby was unable to attend tonight, she had a personal situation at home. Jerry and I are here to speak on her behalf, it takes two of us to fill her shoes.
Wow. Uh, may I have a motion to appoint, please?
So moved.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, appointment, uh...
Finally leave.
What?
You're good to go.
So, we can do one other little item out of...
Order.
Out of order, and that would be, uh, Gary Kelleher and the, uh...
Primary.
Primary school site.
L E P.
L E M and D E P.
L E M, D E P.
The board has the letter in your, uh, in your folder marked Town Departments, at the, in the back of that folder, there is a letter to D E P that probably should be read into the record.
Okay, I haven't seen that letter, uh, but what I do have is, um, I have a price from R.J. McDonald to do a portion of the work, and that is to pulverize approximately three thousand yards of material that sits in the back of the DPW. The price for the, uh, for a crusher is two hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, and it's expected to take eighty hours. And also, the price of a, um, excavator and operator is a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, which is a cost of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Part of that cost, not obviously the crusher, but the excavator, we believe could be an expense borne by L E N, um, who is, uh, the money that he will be giving to us in community service is twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So what I would like to do along with that, um, and I've had, um, conversations with Mark Baldi of D E P, uh, and others, obviously Kevin Jarvis, um, what I'd like to do with that is, we still have existing in, um, Article Five from December thirteenth of oh-four, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Now, that was for the demo of the building, and, um, we are covered to use that up to and including final landscape, however, the language was vague, and we'd just like to bring that before town meeting, and state that, that we just wanna change the article to read any work up to including landscape of the old primary building site.
The accountant has authorized use of the, uh, balance in that fund, um, that would otherwise go to free cash someday down the road.
Yeah, but that, well, obviously, will give us the parking lot that we've, we've been looking for, and that's in the, uh, empty lot right next door where the primary building stood.
So, could I have a motion to sign this, uh...
I'll, uh, make a motion to authorize the chair's sign on behalf of the board's selectmen, uh, letter, uh, as drafted and presented dated February sixth.
Somebody wanna read it into the record?
Sure. Uh, this is dated January, uh, February twenty-sixth, it's Mark Baldi, Deputy Director, Mass D E P Central Regional Office, Bureau Waste Site Cleanup, A New Bond Street, Worcester, Mass. Yes, sir, we have been informed that, uh, Lighthouse Environmental Management, uh, L E M has proposed to complete a supplemental environmental project, SCP, in the town of Rutland, as described below, we understand that SCP is in lieu of D E P fines for violations and penalties at Jordan's Farm, uh, in Rutland, and that the dollar value of the work will be offset cost or paid for the work that would otherwise be paid for by the town to provide the environmental benefit by assisting the town with recycling and reusing stone, rubble, brick, and asphalt that has been generated by roadwork or construction projects in the town. The proposed SCP is subject to the Mass D E P approval in compliance with the applicable regulations and policy. The proposed SCP is include, will include twelve thousand five hundred dollars in L E M equipment and labor for the crushing of the stone, rubble, brick, and asphalt to provide subbase paving material for a municipal parking area adjacent to the Rutland Library. We understand that no fill or other materials will be brought to the site by L E M or accepted by the town from L E M. The work will be coordinated by L E M and supervised by Rutland DPW Superintendent Gary Kelleher. We support this project and appreciate its benefits to the town.
Thank you.
All three signatures on this?
Yeah.
Quiet?
Why not?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I thought my motion said, uh...
I did, but that's all right, we, uh, cut the chair plus.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Do we need a duplicate? I know, we've got two copies here, so, I don't know.
No, one's yours.
Uh, well, just one. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll take...
Or did he read it before he voted?
He had a motion, and we didn't take the vote, sorry.
So I'm seconding with the change that we all signed it, and...
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a little background while Peter's setting up, um, as everybody knows, uh, in November twenty sixteen, ballot question number four passed statewide to allow for the possession of marijuana, uh, for people twenty-one and older, and also, uh, for, provided for regulation and taxation of marijuana sales and products. And Rutland narrowly defeated, uh, question number four by twenty-four fifteen yes and twenty-four sixty-seven no's. So, basically, any bylaw that, uh, to either ban or regulate passed to, is a zoning bylaw, so it would be a zoning bylaw change, which requires a two-thirds majority vote. So because the vote was so close in Rutland, a general sent, uh, survey was sent out, I'm sure everybody saw the little yellow, uh, was sent out with the annual census in an attempt to get a clearer picture of what the voters in, in Rutland actually want. And to date, we have taken in eighteen hundred and fifty-seven surveys that have been returned, and of those, twelve hundred and forty-eight have, uh, had the survey return, which is a sixty-seven return rate. So, it really was a really, I was, I was surprised that it was at such a good rate of return. But Peter has compiled all the results, and if anybody wants to see the original slips, they're all back in the clerk's office, or... But he's even, uh, tabulated all the comments, which are quite interesting.
If I could, uh, refer the board to your, um, new old business, uh, folder in your agenda binders for the, uh, town meeting motion on this, I've, I've also given a summary on that as, as far as, uh, recreational marijuana activity categories.
So, I apologize, this was not ready in time for Abby to make your binders, so I'm handing this out now.
That's fine.
That's what's wrong. So, good evening, my name is Peter Crane, I and the town clerk are here to discuss with you the results of the recreational marijuana survey that went out with this year's census. I apologize for those of you on that wall, it'll be hard to read. We'll cover a little bit of background, we will discuss what the numbers mean and what they don't mean, and finally, there will be results. No quiz, I assure you. The entire point of the exercise, the reason we put out the survey at all is to determine, or try to determine, the bylaws that the town should try to write and present at town meeting for approval. And we want to only write the ones with the highest probability of approval, if we can do that. So, off we go to counting, right? Oh, no, 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 there's a lot of work to do before you even count a single ballot, before you see a single result. The first thing you have to do is to work out how reliable the numbers are, and what it ends up they mean. So for this particular survey with the population of the town and the number of surveys that were sent out, and, and what we got back, we are firmly confident that the margin of error is less than two percent, and the confidence interval is greater than ninety-nine percent. There are a couple assumptions written out there, I'm going to skip over those unless we really want to dig into those in any depth. Hearing nothing, moving on, so now that we know how reliable the numbers are going to be, the next question is, how trustworthy are the numbers? What sort of things build into the trustworthiness of the numbers? And the biggest one is bias built into the system, something that sways a respondent to go one way or the other. And so we had to ask ourselves, did, is there anything in the survey that would persuade someone to vote one way or the other? And by one or the other, the nomenclature I'm using is pro marijuana and anti marijuana. Those are really the two categories, there's a third category of not classifiable, we'll talk about that later, but that's insignificantly small. So, is there anything in the survey that leads anyone to respond in a certain way? Uh, after all the reviews, I was certain that there was no bias. And then, two days after the surveys went out, my wife gets a phone call from a friend. And this friend is railing about how slanted the, um, the survey is tor, against marijuana. That really threw me for a loop, 'cause we would, as I said, going through a lot of work to make sure there is no bias. Uh, I read it again, I didn't see it, I actually took the survey to some people I know, and they went through, and they said, no, there's no bias in this survey. So, and by the way, that person had no idea I was, or she, for that matter, were involved at all in the review process for the survey. So I'm gonna count, that person is an outlier. As I'm processing and transcribing all the comments that come in, from a particularly anti marijuana side came, then, this is a direct quote of the second sentence, "This survey is clearly biased towards the losing voters," which is to say, those who wanted marijuana, recreational marijuana in question four. I happen to believe that if you're being criticized from both ends, that you probably hit the middle pretty well. Since no one I know could detect any bias in the survey, we're assuming that there is none. But there could be a, uh, bias from the person doing the counting. And so, I'm gonna do something I do very rarely, I'm gonna say what I think about marijuana use, simply because it's important for you to understand and take that into account for how trustworthy the results are. I actually have two very strong opinions. Number one, I don't care. I don't use marijuana, and I'm not going to. Uh, as they would say in the sixties and seventies, he's much too straight for that, it's just not my thing. From a philosophical point of view, though, I am my, very libertarian in this regard, and so I believe that people should have the ability to purchase and consume marijuana. But, for what it's worth, there it is. In order to weed out the biases in the tally, you set up very explicit rules for counting, and that's what this numerical, numerical model is. It simply says, how, when a result comes in, how are you going to count it? And again, it's gotta be pro, it's gotta be anti, or it's gotta be uncategorizable. Now, I'm not gonna delve, delve at all into statistical theory, I'm not actually going to make you do serious math, now that I've said the magic words, two percent and ninety-nine percent confidence interval, but as a review, this is the survey, or at least the questions. It has two questions, and each question has a yes or no answer. Ideally, someone would say yes to one, no to two, or no to one, yes to two. Those are absolutely classifiable as pro or anti marijuana. But the world is not so clear, because there are sixteen different ways for an individual to fill out this survey. We're gonna hit on them very, very briefly. Let's start with what I call the pure pro and pure anti marijuana responses, which is yes, no, no, yes. And, if only one box was checked of the four, this is how they were counted. Finally, not finally, excuse me, next, we have some much more complex results. If somebody checked both yes boxes, what does that mean? I put a couple of reasons they would do that, they would answer that way. And so, the rule that I constructed was, we're going to vote, uh, if you have two yeses, it's yes for no and yes for anti. And that is why numbers add up to more than a hundred percent when you look at the end result. If somebody voted no twice, that could mean a number of things far more complicated than two yes. And again, you come up with a rule, and the rule I came up with was, it counts as a third for each side. The unclassifiable ones, I love the statement, every vote counts unless it doesn't. Um, so there are four, well, it says four, there's a list of four different ways, classified ways to fill it out. The only one of these that had any were four non-responses, we got four blank surveys back. Now, a couple of them did have comments indicating that they were confused by the questions. So I apologize for the confusion, with the space that we had, we made it as clear as we could. Nobody did any of the others, that little text at the bottom, I'm going to just hit on briefly. Remember, this is a town census, and so each address gets one and only one survey, but if you have multiple voters who wish to represent their enters, multiple people were allowed to respond on a given survey. This is where surveyor bias, tally or bias can creep in. I don't believe I did anything wrong, but if there's a place, this is where it happened, because there's no clear and obvious rule for some of them. We've talked about the way the, uh, the, the surveys can be filled out, but we didn't talk about the big comment box on the bottom. I have included several comments from the first back... I have included several comments from the first batch. I'm not going to read them to you. What I will say is that I have sent a document to the town clerk with every comment to be posted on the website. I'm also sending her the Excel spreadsheet that has all the tallying and all the formulas so someone else can independently verify all the work that was done.
And Anita will actually have the paper surveys themselves.
And that's the last thing, these surveys have already been returned. Now, before we talk about the answers, let's do a little bit more thinking. A few things to consider, as Anita said, the results in town for question four in twenty sixteen were very close, it was less than 1.1% difference. That indicates the town is very, or at that time was very closely split. As Anita also said, you need a two-thirds supermajority to pass a zoning bylaw. So how close is close enough before you say, this is the direction we ought to go? What happens if a or all proposed bylaws fail, we're stuck only with the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations and laws, which have very few restrictions in them?
Well, they're strict, but they're blanket restrictions across all municipalities, the states.
What is the default town position? And by that, I mean, given no other information, what do each of you, the town leaders, believe should happen with recreational marijuana in town? I am not asking you for an answer right now, I'm asking you to keep this in mind. And finally, and most importantly, there is no subtlety to the questions. There was not a question about retail sales. Although I can tell you without question, that's what many people thought it was about. There is no distinction between retail sales and cultivation, nor testing, nor any of the other, very many different classifications of licenses that are available. So don't think too harshly that a number means specifically about any particular classification of license. I'm going to pause for just a moment, because I did want to hand these out also. The last two sheets. Yes, I'm the kind of person when he passes out a mystery, likes to rip out the final chapter so nobody knows what the answer is until I'm willing to give it to him.
All right.
So, as Anita said, we got a sixty-seven percent response.
Oh, I have it.
We should have that.
Yeah, I have it.
Sixty-seven percent response rate, which is unbelievably phenomenal. There is not a surveying or polling company in the world that would not roll over with joy at getting a sixty-seven percent response rate, they're used to seeing five and six percents. A thousand two hundred and forty-eight surveys containing, because multiple people can respond on one, a thousand three oh four responses. What does it mean, what are the results? Dun, dun, dun. If a generic bylaw to allow the presence of marijuana businesses in Rutland were to be put before town voters, I predict that approximately forty-seven point five percent of the population would vote for that bylaw. That doesn't, even with the two percent margin of error, does not hit a simple majority. Again, no distinction between all the different classifications. So I can't tell you that retail will fail and cultivation will succeed, or that onsite premises will succeed, I don't know, we don't have that level of information. If a survey, excuse me, if a bylaw would put forth at town meeting to prohibit all marijuana businesses, I believe the answer is approximately sixty-six percent of the people would vote for that banned bylaw. Again, without the possibility of distinction of different classifications and different prohibitions will have better success rates than others. Are there questions I can answer for you?
That was very thorough.
I'd just like to reiterate that the town meeting that's coming on March twelfth is to vote a moratorium or a pause on taking any actions on final bylaws, either banning or allowing certain uses. Putting the moratorium on until December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, so the town can do its due diligence and plan out what, if any, license categories it may allow or whether or not it wants to ban all marijuana activities. So, I just want to reiterate that this is what's coming up at the town meeting on March twelfth, it's to vote on a moratorium, so a pause in order for the town to plan out over the next several months.
To the chair, if I may.
Yep.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you both for your efforts, this is quite a bit of work and very thorough at that. So, thank you very much for your efforts, greatly appreciate it both of you. I'm going to put the chief on the spot for a minute. Chief?
Right.
What's your position on this? Any, if any?
Sure. My brief position is that people buy marijuana anyways, people are smoking it anyways, and right now they're buying it from drug dealers. They're going to continue to buy it from drug dealers if it's not available retail. So, that's really my position right now.
Okay. Pros or cons, retail in Holden or Paxton versus Rutland?
I think Holden and Paxton are probably better than Rutland.
More traffic?
My concern would be with it being available in retail, this kid's getting hold of it.
So retail is just one of approximately nineteen categories and subcategories of license categories. And I think Peter mentioned cultivation, there's transportation, there's micro businesses, there's testing facilities, there's all kinds of different categories.
There's research and development, there's literally research and development for marijuana.
Research and development, yeah. And I'd recommend that the board give some consideration to, once this is presented to town meeting, to putting together an ad hoc committee to really study this, that the ad hoc committee, including the police chief and others who are stakeholders in implementation of this, or planning.
Can I ask, Anita, what's our, so out of the census, we've received eighteen fifty-nine, what's that percentage within the town?
We mailed out about thirty-two hundred. Probably two hundred and thirty were returned as not deliverable, and so that brings it down a little bit further. They're still coming in, so I don't think that Peter will tally the rest, but we'll certainly keep them separate and, you know, take a look. But, so we're, maybe we still probably have another, we never get a hundred percent return.
So at eighteen hundred versus the three, you're at about sixty percent from rough numbers up and down?
Approximately.
Yeah.
So, if I'm just looking at these, you totaled thirteen hundred responses. Out of those thirteen hundred, you threw out two hundred and forty-eight? Nineteen percent?
No, 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 no. That was unclear, I apologize. It says that there are nineteen percent of responses were either two yeses or two no's.
No, no, it's two folks.
So what did you do with those?
So, well, for the two yeses, it's a yes and a no. For the two no's, it's a third yes and a third no. Sorry, a third pro and a third no.
There's multiple members in the same household.
Well, that, multiple members accounted.
No, no, that's actually not that.
No, but multiple members accounted for fifty-six additional responses. You got twelve forty-eight surveys and you counted thirteen oh four responses.
And some had two, some had three, one even had four responses on it.
So your every vote counts unless it doesn't, invalids on the check no boxes?
There were four.
There were four, so.
Can you pull up the survey, Peter? So we can get a, there it is.
Okay, so there were four that had no responses of the thirteen oh four?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I tend to.
Who are you driving at?
I'm trying to understand the numbers, because as Peter indicated, there were, you know, on his how hard can it be to count issue, so there's sixteen ways to complete the survey.
Right.
But when we come out with results, with your votes to allow and votes to prohibit, how do we account for the people who were possibly, as you noted, confused? The complex results. So twenty percent, again, so I guess that's back, I thought it was, you threw out two hundred and forty-eight, but of the two hundred and forty-eight votes included in these percentages, excuse me, of these percentages, two hundred and forty-eight of the votes were complex?
No, I don't think that's the, I don't think there's any there that indicates the number, I can find it, if you give me a minute. So there were a hundred eight yes, yes, a hundred forty-nine no, no. So that's two hundred fifty-seven total.
Two fifty-seven that were complex.
That were of the complex form.
That could mean a number of things. It could mean that the person completing the survey was confused, it could mean that they either support a full-out ban on everything, or they support allowing everything.
That's right, that they don't want limits. This is in fact, that in fact is one of the really interesting subtle things about the survey. Oh, I'm not even showing that anymore. Well, the question was, will you vote, will you vote in favor of a bylaw to allow the limited presence of recreational marijuana businesses? Some people took the word limited to mean extremely limited, and they don't want extremely limited, they want at least as many as there are alcohol shops. And I can support that with the comments. So they didn't like the word limited, which is why they voted against it.
Right.
Or say they voted against it, even though they are pro marijuana.
So, basically, there's a range of responses, a huge range of responses. And I think what the survey, what the survey does in the end is, I think it does support the town doing its due diligence to really plan, to really plan this out for a bylaw that works for the town. Again, whether it's banned, whether it's allowing certain activities, the town does need to do its due diligence. And we also have to keep in mind that the state's regulations are still being developed and finalized. And when these surveys first went out, they were in very draft form and the CCC hadn't even had its first public hearing. So, I think, you know, generally, the public's information on how many license categories there are and what each of them means is fairly limited still. So.
I can only agree with that assessment.
The town has some work to do.
So today, the commission delayed, voted to delay home delivery and social consumption.
That's two of the nineteen categories.
Yeah, so that won't open in July, no matter what a town does.
Okay.
So.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Yes, thank you, Peter and Anita. Let's go to the warrant, get this, you know, on this subject.
The board has already voted to place the warrant article. And the motion will read, it'll be, it'll reflect the article itself, the motion will read, "I move at the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding the new Article Twelve Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments that would provide, as shown on the handout titled Article Twelve Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments, and further to amend the table of contents to add Article Twelve Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments." Town meeting will be given a handout that shows the temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments. Anita, has this been posted on the website? The actual, the handout?
The, yes.
The bylaw, okay, so that can be found on the town's website, or if you want to check in with Anita. And I included a summary, this is going to require a two-thirds vote, because it would be a zoning bylaw. Finance committee has voted favorably to recommend the vote under the motion. And I do, I explain in a summary below the article, this article temporarily pauses town action to implement any bylaws regulating or banning recreational marijuana in Rutland until December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. The purpose of the moratorium is to wait for the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission to fully implement regulations that are currently in draft form, and for the town to conduct a full and thorough planning process to consider whether any recreational marijuana licensed categories or activities should be presented as zoning and/or general bylaws to a fall's two thousand eighteen special town meeting. And I listed the number of license categories that are out there. If anybody's interested, might as well introduce them. Can I, want me to just read through these real quick? They're.
You would like.
Okay. Marijuana cultivator tiers one, two, or three, those are based on acreage or size of the cultivation facility or the cultivation activity. Craft marijuana cultivator cooperative, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, which would include storefront or delivery only. Marijuana social consumption establishment, which has been delayed, that would be primary use, like a bar or cafe, specifically, whose specific purpose is marijuana consumption, or mixed use, it would be ancillary to a primary use, so it could be any cafe that happens to allow marijuana consumption. Another category would be marijuana research facility, another would be independent testing laboratory, standards testing laboratory, marijuana transporter, which would include third-party transporter or existing licensee transporter, or marijuana microbusiness. So it's still a lot of information to be gathered on these categories.
So with that being said. We have public comment, anybody here for public comment? It's our name and.
Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. Take the board for the opportunity to speak. I'm wondering if now would be a opportune time to begin a discussion about the town's position concerning the statuses of strong chief and weak chief as it pertains to our two public safety entities, the fire department and the police department.
Just to interrupt you, the fire chief already is a strong chief.
Right.
You realize that?
I do. Thank you. Thank you. Two meetings ago, the fire chief came up, stood at this platform, fire chief being a strong chief. Gave a very eloquent report of the ongoings of his department, and just advised the board of three promotions that the strong chief had made back in January. The fire chief advised the board that a captain was promoted to deputy chief, a lieutenant was promoted to captain, and a firefighter was promoted to lieutenant. The board thanked the chief for his time, he walked away content. Two meetings before that, the other public safety chief, the police chief, a weak chief by statute, stood at this very same podium, gave every bit as eloquent a report to the town, and then proceeded to submit a request for promotion for the leading candidate in a sergeant's promotional process. I'm not here to discuss the merits of the vote, but the results of the two standards, one chief being a strong chief, the other one being a weak chief, leaves the town with different results. So I am wondering, and through the chair with respect, if the board members care to opine on what is your position concerning parity amongst our two public safety chiefs? Equality amongst the two? Should they both be strong chief? Should they both be weak chief? Or is no change needed? And if there is a consensus that change could be warranted, would you be amenable to put. to putting the matter on the warrant for the upcoming May meeting so that the town's people could decide? Sure.
Take it under advisement. Go ahead, Margaret.
I just want to speak to the statutes themselves. Um, you're probably aware that they do differ in appointing authority. The fire chief is given appointing authority under the strong fire chief statute where the police, uh, chief statute, the strong police chief statute does not, does still not give appointing authority. It allows a little more, um, autonomy, but it still doesn't give appointing authority. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. There's just something to be considered.
My question, what is the next process? What needs to be done if, if you're looking for parity and make the police chief a strong chief?
But you don't have under mass, uh, MGL, that same statute across the two types of organizations. Under master general law, the police and fire departments have different statutes. The appointing authority still resides with the board of selectmen, uh, for police and fire, uh, can go right through the department itself because of MGL.
So nothing will be done?
Now, for appointing authority, for other items, may, yes, he, they, there is some different statutes, as Margaret stated, uh, with that, but not from the appointing authority.
Um, and, and chapter acceptance, as you noted, does, does go to town meeting. That would be a town meeting action.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anybody else for public comment? If not, we're gonna move on to town administrator budget updates, please, Margaret.
Um, well, okay, in your, uh, town department, uh, sleeve, I've got the latest. Uh, new revenues, uh, at this point, total nine hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, there's still gonna be a little movement in there based on, uh, health insurance indirects that would be charged to the enterprises, um, and to, um, uh, the regional services. Budget, the, uh, requested budgets, um, exceed our new revenues by almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars, so there is going to have to be some trimming. Um, in municipal, this is a kind of a different year, um, we are not seeing too much, um, excess, um, actually, on the, um, in the education section of the budget. Um, we are seeing, um, some, uh, large requested increases in some municipal department budgets, and we are, uh, going to have to, um, we're gonna have to sort through those and, uh, and work at getting those bottom lines down. Uh, so again, some of the department's increases do exceed what the proportion of the new revenues would be to their budget section. Other departments don't. Other departments actually have come in, uh, where their threshold, uh, under where their threshold would be. Uh, so in the net, in the coming weeks, um, I am going to be, uh, talking with departments, uh, about bottom line numbers and getting the bottom line numbers to, um, to a number that the town can actually, the revenues can actually, uh, support. Um, it's not as dire as it has been in recent years, which is, which is good news, uh, but we still have to do some responsible, uh, trimming of departmental budgets to be able to live within our means. Um, uh, so those are the, the highlights, lowlights, uh, at this point. Uh, we'll continue to do work, we'll continue to scrub. The documents that the board has before you, um, you have a very, very, uh, preliminary working budget document based on FY nineteen department requests, and you do have, I have shown new revenue, uh, distributions throughout the budget based on the percent of a, um, budget section's, uh, portion to the total operating budget. And you can see where they fall based on the new, uh, where the requests fall based on new revenues. Uh, so we're working, uh, we're going to be trimming some, and in the coming weeks, you'll see, you'll see some reductions on the budget side and some fine tuning on the, uh, on the revenue side.
Margaret, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do you know offhand the cherry sheet of the general government, why that was such a significant reduction from the past?
Uh, we have a reduction in pilot, in state-owned land. We actually are seeing a reduction in our state-owned land distribution, yes.
Why?
Um, a lot of towns actually are.
Because they've just suddenly decided it's not as valuable as it was last year?
I think it has to do with, and we could ask the assessors more, you know, for, for a full, uh, answer to this, um, they do base their, uh, state-owned land dispersments on valuations of the state-owned land, the, the properties themselves. Uh, so we'll have to look to see what year they used and, uh, what the basis for the reduction was.
Is there an opportunity to question it?
Uh, uh, probably. I think as it makes its way through the, through the House and Senate, I think that we'd be able to, to look further into that. Um, we also don't have an answer yet, um, on regional transportation and whether or not, uh, see, the governor has, uh, level-funded regional transportation. We don't have an answer yet as to whether or not the legislature will support increasing, um, uh, reimbursement on regional school transportation. Um, this board has submitted a letter of support doing that, and I know a lot of, of boards across the state have, have done that. So we need to keep, keep the pressure on our legislature. And I have gotten assurance from our school administrators that any, uh, increase in the school regional transportation reimbursement would come off of our assessment, so.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, could I have a motion to accept the resignation of Julie Kelly from CIPC?
I'll move with regrets.
All those in favor?
And thank Julie for her time and her volunteerism.
Could I have a motion to accept the donation from the council on aging, from donations received from the ag, uh, Department of Agriculture located in Holden, Mass., and Kopitz in room two and three from CNS Kopitz Mills in Rutland, Mass.?
I'm very happy to make this public and thank him. I'm just wondering, we've typically accepted gifts at this level at town meeting.
Well, I, uh, this is...
No, I understand.
Can you repeat that again?
I, I understand that Nancy requested the board of selectmen accept the donations, but we've historically accepted donations at this dollar level at town meeting. I think the last time we did it was the donation of seven hundred dollars worth of flags from a Girl Scout troop.
That's an, an interesting, an interesting observation. So the town meeting actually authorizes the board of selectmen to accept gifts, grants, donations, and bequests on behalf of the town? So you do have the authority to accept...
Haven't taken, haven't exercised our authority. Okay.
See, thought would be as, uh, foreign. Whatever. We have, now we have cable.
And everybody says it before.
There's nothing precluded. There's nothing precluded from a local town meeting.
Or does have the authority to accept all such donations?
We can make a note during town meeting, just, uh, as additional thanks, uh...
Okay.
Make sure that they get some recognition for their donations. Not an issue there. But at this point, we do have better coverage these days, uh, with, uh, the, uh...
Cable.
Cable.
I got a motion, second, and all those in favor?
Uh, did you hear a motion?
No.
Okay. I'll, if you'd like, I will make the motion, uh, to accept the gifts as a request by the COA director.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With a footnote that we also, uh, at town meeting, uh, acknowledge.
You got the guy down in the back. He can, uh, he, remember that, Randy?
Yeah.
No problem.
We'll, we'll put it on your cheat note, note.
Um, I think we're, I think we're overestimating our audience, but that's okay. I mean, I'm, cable.
Setting town, setting the annual town meeting polling hours and, uh...
That's what Anita's here for.
What's the suggestion from the board? What the hours would you like?
Actually, I'd like to ask Anita for her suggestions or recommendations. I know we've always gone back and forth and...
Well, I'm all for continuity.
Okay.
But there's also, and it's up to, to your board, but it's also the dollar figure of those other three hours, you know? If we waited and opened at ten, probably close to twelve thousand dollars, counting the, uh, police officer details, so.
You said twelve thousand?
Twelve for a eight-hour...
No, it would be, uh, well, it'd shorten it by three hours, 'cause years ago, we used to do for, for, um, local elections, it was always ten AM to, to eight PM.
Right.
But the last, kind of flip-flopped for a few years, which I do think is confusing for voters.
I agree.
And I think the last couple of years, it has been seven to, seven AM to eight PM, but it falls under your board's jurisdiction.
And what's that additional cost, Anita, to put the extra three hours?
Probably close to, to twelve thousand. I mean, sorry, not twelve thousand, uh, twelve hundred dollars.
I heard you say it's about twelve.
We really would raise some flags, Mark.
We could actually cut it to noon if that was the case.
There you go.
Anita, you know where I stand on this. Cutting hours.
I see both sides.
No, I, but, you know, we talk about the additional cost, but when you look at how much money is not necessarily on the ballot in its form, sometimes it is, if we end up putting debt exclusions or God knows what. So sometimes that money figure is on that ballot. And then when you have all these races, the decisions that are made later, it's a lot more than twelve hundred dollars. So when we start limiting people from voting by an hour here, an hour there, I, I know, I know you don't get a huge turnout running in the door at seven AM, but you might not get a huge turnout at two forty-two either. Uh, we don't, you know, we don't shut down for a lunch break and we don't, I, I, I'm not, as you all know, in favor of limiting voting hours.
No, and I only bring it because it's up to your board to determine, and, and like I said, I, I think consistency is, is, is...
So last year, what did we do, Anita?
It's been...
Seven AM, seven to eight?
Yes, seven AM to eight PM.
So that was a thirteen-hour day.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want, somebody wants to make a motion for the hours?
Make a motion to retain the hours that we've held for our annual elections to seven AM to eight PM.
Second.
Yeah, uh, consistency, I think, uh, Anita brings up a good point. And, you know, for three hours of foretalk, you're only twelve hundred dollars, especially you have the size of our town right now, um, I see that, uh, being, uh, needed, shall we say. So I'll, I'll second that motion.
So all, all in favor?
Aye.
I might feel differently once they go to early voting for local elections. Hopefully, that's, uh, lays down the road, but, and also, you haven't, um, set the time light, um, for the annual town meeting either, so that...
Do we have a date for that?
May twelfth.
The twelfth.
Twelfth, May twelfth.
May twelfth.
Saturday, May twelfth.
Usually, we set that time when we open up the warrant, right? We do that all in one night? I don't...
Well, it's consistent, so we can do it early, we can do it later. Did you need it?
Seven o'clock. Seven PM would be consistent for annual town meeting.
And I can, you know, I can put out my total election calendar without the time, you know, just with the meeting day, but...
But, I mean, if we're gonna stay consistent, we can do it tonight.
It's always been seven o'clock, right?
Seven, yeah.
Seven o'clock, so I'll make the motion. We set the annual town meeting from May twelfth at seven PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That way, it's on the books.
Good, thank you.
I'm sure that helps you with ordering things as well.
So the other thing we have on here is, uh...
It's legal counsel. Mark the calendar. Calendar, time, time to be there.
Is the, uh, accepting of, uh, the appointment of, uh, policy revisions?
So the board, uh, this is under the new old business folder. Board not too long ago adopted, uh, board and committee, uh, appointments, policies, and procedures, and I am suggesting, um, that some additional wording, some additional language be added, uh, to this policy and procedure, um, that would allow the boards to take into consideration, uh, any and all of, all of the following criteria prior to appointing new members, filling vacancies and reappointing existing members to boards and committees. Uh, one, written recommendation from the relevant board or committee. Two, municipal and individual risk exposure due to potential conflicts of interest under MGL Chapter two sixty-eight A and two sixty-eight B, and professional qualifications, experience, and availability of member as described in the member's letter of interest.
Margaret, I think I only have one thing.
Okay.
Uh, on the second page, the procedures, the first bullet point.
Yes.
Boards and committees with vacancies and membership shall prepare at their next scheduled meeting or within fifteen days after receiving a letter of resignation, whichever comes first.
Mm-hmm. Okay, whichever comes first.
And I would like to get a, a motion for a couple of letters that we would like to send out, one is to...
Oh, we have to just...
Are we voting on that this evening, or are we...
Usually, you, usually you have it for review, and then you'd be voting it on it at your next meeting.
If you're comfortable, we might as well vote it in and get it done.
I thought this was our second view of it, no?
This is your first view of the newest of the amendments.
The newest iteration.
Yep, the amendments.
I like all of the changes. I just had that small one. I can go either way.
The board's prerogative.
We'll, we'll stand, uh, stand as a process.
We have time.
Okay. Two weeks, it'll come back.
Did I get a motion from the board to sign our approval letters to send to Demola's...
Market.
Market Basket?
Um, can we get some history on this?
Yes, Sheila, can you, uh, would you, would you be able to, to speak to the background on this with the meeting with Jay Ash?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the meeting with Jay Ash and, and such a large group right here, actually in this building, was it just a week ago? It feels like longer. Um, it was really productive, uh, to have gone around the room and have people say, over and over, how many residents we've heard from saying they wish they had a Market Basket. Um, well, the background with that is that Mr. Ash, uh, his former position as the city manager in Chelsea had a very, uh, pretty close relationship with the people at Market Basket. Um, in addition to that, and he and I had talked about that a couple of times, um, I grew up going to the second-ever Demola's Market Basket before it was Market Basket. So his office, um, with many thanks, has already reached out to Market Basket, and it seems appropriate at this point for us to also reach out on a personal level, uh, to explain how deeply felt so many of our residents, um, have the idea, the idea that they could bring a Market Basket here. Uh, now, the, it, just to kind of fill that out, it came up multiple times that the current Market Basket store formula will not fit in Rutland. So typically, their latest stores are large footprint, large square footage, they are at intersections of large roads, numbered roads, highways. Um, the idea here would be to see if Market Basket would be willing to invest in a community the way it invested when they started out. So there are community-sized stores in Lowell, in Drakeett, where they began. Um, I think they are certainly trying to make inroads across the rest of the state, and it's entirely possible that they can see themselves doing a little bit more of a, a different formula here and, and going back to the idea of a community store. Um, we will need to see what they think when they start looking at numbers. How many people can they pull from Holden and from Ocam and from Hubbardston and, in addition to Rutland, that would shop here? Because again, our numbers are not ever going to meet the size of those that are in the cities, like Ethel. So, um, it's a long shot, but...
That is.
It wasn't considered an out of, uh, completely out of the realm of possibility. So I think, I think that coming from Jay Ash's office, um, and with the experiences he's had with them, I, I think it's well worth the shot.
So given that, um, that Jay Ash has already reached out, this was discussed, and two years ago, in the town's economic development survey, residents clearly expressed an interest in a supermarket, uh, coming to town. Um, this is why the letter is presented to the board, to show support for, for this type of, this type of...
And what kind of response did Mr. Ash receive from reaching out to Demola?
They actually, they did inform, um, Jay Ash that they would be looking into it. So this would be reiterating, um, the secretary's, um, outreach.
So could I have a motion to sign?
Sure, nothing ventured, nothing gained, so by all means.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'll tell you, you already signed it.
There you go. Good job.
Sorry about that. It was in the packet with, with the, uh, warrant and what have you. So we had to review the town meeting article, did we not?
You did.
All right. Um, we're looking at you, Gary.
All night. All night, Skipper.
Well, I'm... Well, I'm sorry, but you know how it goes. You got to meet the dog too.
I will not take as long as my dear friend, Mr. Peter Crane did.
Nobody does.
Can we hold you up to that?
Yes, you can. So we'll just zip through this stuff.
All right.
Primary school, we already talked about. I'm just giving you an update on snow and ice expenditures to date, so we are right at about the $195,000 mark. The line item is 150, and I'm sure everybody remembers, last year, we were $92,000 over, so hopefully, we won't go that high.
You haven't gone over yet, though.
Oh, yeah.
You're saying you went over.
He's already over by 40,000.
Okay, so I'm gonna need to authorize you to deficit spend that line.
You already did.
Okay.
What else? Uh-oh. So anyway, I don't know what's coming this weekend yet, but somebody knows the fuels and the shed is full, so we're ready for it.
Awesome.
So let's see, we have Rutland Heights. I have been in conversation with Rebecca Woolery of the DEP as well as Mr. Baldi. And I have a 40-page report on my desk regarding the AOL, certificates of noncompliance that were issued approximately 10, 12 years ago. And for more recent than that, obviously, a certificate of compliance. So the site is in compliance as we speak. The only things that we don't know, and nobody has been able to put a handle on, is if the 1.6 acres of the old lead ash dump site is the only area that's considered to be a brownfield or brownfields, or is it the entire site? Nobody can answer that. Mr. Baldi has told me that the whole area is the brownfields. Ms. Woolery has not said that. So it looks to me, at this point, and from what I've read into the report so far, that the 1.6 is definitely a brownfield. And that requires regular maintenance, be it annual, some annual, some semi-annual, which we will have to make sure that we take care of that. So I mean, there's a lot more to do. I mean, I can certainly send the report to anybody that wants to see it. Very informational, good stuff, good stuff to read. And I, hopefully, it's the only one, the 1.6, especially with the Market Basket, Sheila, because that just can't, that's an area that just cannot be penetrated. You can put ground mount, solar, for instance, ground mount on that site, but you can't penetrate, so you can't dig foundations or so on and so forth, so. But that, you know, at least, what, 84, 86.4 acres are remaining, so I'll forward the report to you. Please take a look at it, and I'm gonna continue to do the research on it. So we'll go to the dam, Dam and Seawall Repair, through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs of the Dam and Seawall Repair or Replacement Program. The papers have been submitted to the state for the approval of the $40,000, which is our 25% share of the $200,000, $190,000 bill for design and engineering. But they're starting on that, they're working on that as we speak, and obviously, once we get the 25% completion for everybody to review, you'll have that, and you'll know well ahead of time. It looks good. There's another opportunity for a small bridge application that can actually be applied for, for additional monies for that project. Hopefully, we can do that, because it is, you know, it's a costly, it's a costly repair or replacement, once it gets to that point. So let's see, that's that, and that, and that. So we have, we have a lot of calls, actually, to come down and visit me on my office hours. So I will announce that on March 6, I will have, by appointment, office hours from 4 to 6. That's a Tuesday. Anita, I think you already given that information?
I believe it came to our office.
So that's the first date, and we'll just see how it goes, because there have been calls for folks to come down and see me. And a lot of the concern, and a lot of the calls we get, is for our gravel and dirt roads. So I just want people to understand that we had a quick freeze and we had a slow thaw. So we had a three-foot frost, and folks have to remember that at the bottom level of that, the three-foot, that's the state frozen. And we got those heavy rains, and we got the thaw, it just created ruts. Now, it costs about $2,000 for 100 yards of material to repair these roads. And the problem with that is that we're buying the material and it's just turning to muck. We've bought, we've bought Millings, they're expensive. That's all we can put down there. We've put trap rock in there, and they just continue to sink. So I just, I'm just asking for the town's patience, and I know that's a tough word, but we have to wait for this stuff to dry out before so we can do some final repair to our dirt roads. I apologize for the condition. I know the board certainly remembers that my, one of my first things coming to town was, let's pave our dirt roads. I get it, people don't want to pave, but we have to understand that we live in New England, we get freeze thaw. It's the way it is. So I apologize, we're doing the best we can. And that's what I got, 14 and a half minutes. Thank you, sir.
Outstanding.
So questions? So Gary.
Yes, sir.
All these dirt roads, if the people brought in a petition to have it hot-dopped, would this be beneficial to everybody in town? If everybody on the street asked to have it done?
It's a cost savings, Skipper. Certainly saves on the equipment. In my eyes, it's beneficial, maintenance-wise, beneficial. But it's still up to the board. We've had petitions before. It's still up to the board to make that final decision.
From what funding mechanism?
Right, that's the question. Tell chapter 90 work.
Gary, what's the cost per mile on a full pave like that, where you have to do prep work on...
$489,000.
Per mile.
And we just got the chapter 90 notice today that you're getting 330-something thousand.
So that's...
Mile at a time.
Three-quarters of a mile.
Three-quarters of a mile, yeah.
There's other ways that are cheaper. You can get chapter 90 approval for a gravel road. What you have to do is take all that stuff off the top, and you have to put geotech material down, proper drainage, proper slope.
And what's that from?
I actually did it, a fraction of the cost.
You say fraction?
I would say you could probably get $50,000 for a mile, but it has to be done right. People have to stay off it. They have to let, I've done it before. They've gotta let me dig it up, they've gotta let me lay the material, put the drainage in, and then, I mean, by the geomaterial, the drainage, and then the gravel.
Now, that's fine. What if they want paving after that? What happens then?
I doubt that they would, from the calls I've been getting, but I, I'm, that's the way it is. I fully support...
No, I'm talking cost impact. I'm just looking at the full picture. All right, you can do it at 50,000 for a mile, based on what you're...
Roughly, roughly.
Roughly. 60, yeah. Pick it up, pick it up. So when five miles is done, 6 times 5, 300,000. You've got a five-mile stretch done. A few years down the road, the houses on the street have been built up, and you've got more folks living on the street now that you'd like to see blacktop. Is there any benefit to having what you're doing first, or is that cost similar, and you have to start from scratch, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yeah, and you still have a good subbase of the gravel material. With the geotech, that's not gonna hurt anything. It just gives the water a way to go.
You go right over it?
Yeah, go right over it.
So what does that do to cost per mile?
Well, then, obviously, you don't have to reclaim.
Right.
Which is a couple hundred, you know, it's probably $120,000, $130,000 there for a mile. So that work is done. It's just compaction, base and top.
And that runs us how much a mile?
That without all the others, is you're looking at probably, probably $200,000. And I'm just, I'm trying to...
Per mile?
Per mile. For just the pave.
I understand.
Because everything else is done.
I understand.
Culverts are done, cross drainage is done.
I understand. So at 300 change that we have, that gives us a mile and a half of paving per year.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask you a theoretical question? We've not made a paved road dirt, right? These are all existing dirt roads that people knowingly live on and moved on to. Are you getting these calls just during mud season? I guess I, I sit here and wonder, because we have this conversation every year. The roads get bad in the spring, we all know they do. I guess, and I'm not objective about this. I live on a beautifully paved, very fast road. I would give anything to live on a dirt road. Where it gets muddy for a little while, but people are driving 25 miles an hour and not the 70 that they are online. And I'm looking at two people in this room that live on dirt roads, and I'm wondering their take on it.
Gary knows how I feel, so this won't be a surprise, but I'm vehemently opposed. I live on, well, you know, Sassawanna, which is a scenic road, and it's a dirt road. But I've never, ever, ever complained, have I, Gary?
No, you haven't, except for Boulder.
Well, that was on Pumagusa, and that was on Pumagusa, and I was concerned for people's safety. People fly on the dirt road. If Sassawanna was paved, I can't imagine how fast. I was almost creamed on Saturday morning. Somebody was coming down Sassawanna, there's a little hill before you come down to our house, and a small car. I, I can't believe how fast he was going. And if it had been a dog or a kid there instead of my car, I don't, I think that he would have hit him, because he wouldn't have seen them so fat, so quick. But, and that's, I like my dirt road, but the other thing is, is that I know people would just move, but I understand the cost problem with the town, but... And I, most of the people that I know on Sassawanna move there, I mean, they all moved there knowing it was a dirt road and that, that it, you know, probably would never be paved, but I can't speak for other roads.
Well, so I'm looking at the other person, he's smiling back there. Now, and in fairness, we know that Britnall has become a throughway for many people, and development has increased. So I certainly understand that, different from 20 or 30 years ago, you know, I know how long you've been there, there's a lot more traffic on Britnall. So certainly, that's a factor. I get it.
Personally, I'm perfectly happy with it being, you know, a dirt road. Obviously, this winter, it's been much worse than a lot of others. I will praise Gary for the work that he does on the gravel roads. He does as much as he can with, well, with not a heck...
A little bag ass.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not a heck of a lot more than a road grader and a loader. And it would be nice, I think, I'm sure he'd just love to have a couple of extra $100,000 to be able to top dress fresh gravel on some of these roads, you know, to keep them up. But, you know, regardless, but, and again, things are, I don't know, maybe this isn't really for publication, but Anita, I think you related the story to me. There's been, as most of you know, there's been several new houses built on Britnall Drive, and I believe you got either a call or a letter or something on, or maybe it was a return on the census, other people that just moved into one of these new houses.
It was actually an existing house, but they had been in town for maybe two weeks, and...
And they wanted to know, you know, when was the road gonna be fixed and when was it gonna be paved?
Yeah, but we got a lot of roads in town that are not historic, that dirt roads that, you know, people live on, and granted, they, it was like that when they bought the house, but...
Yeah, but on that note, and you're all, you're all right.
Gary, you're over your 15 minutes.
I know, but Peter's...
You guys are getting off topic here.
Just keep going.
You guys are staying on track here. We still have another session to do.
Okay, but I'm gonna get out of here. But everybody here is absolutely right. Sheila, you're absolutely right. Anita is enormous. Britnall's a mess because of the traffic that's traveling on Britnall, that shouldn't be traveling on Britnall. The only way to fix those gravel roads is to dig all that crap out of there, lay down 14 to 18 inches of new gravel, processed gravel, compact, and calcified. By calcified, I mean liquid calcium. It's the only way to stiffen it up, but all that junk's gotta come out of there. But anyway, they're all, they're all absolutely right. Once you pave it, it's a speedway. Every one of them can be used as a cut through, every one of them.
Good, 22.
Okay, I'm gone. See you later, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Not that I know of.
If not, I'll make the motion to, going to executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation. If an open meeting may have a determination effect on the bargaining or the litigating position of the public body, the chair declares so. And only to come back into open session for the purpose of German.
Have a second? Go, go, go.
At the side.
Okay.